Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council October 30th work session. And today we're talking about Envision Eugene implementation. The city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Alyssa to have her do a presentation.
Great, thank you. Today, the purpose of today's work session is to give you a high-level overview of the proposed Single Family Code amendments. And the goal here really is to get you familiar in advance of your upcoming hearing, which is scheduled for November 18th. Let me figure out how this thing works.
Look.
Oh, I got it. I'm pointing it the right way this time. So today I'm going to cover the Envision Eugene goals. I'm also going to give you some highlights of the public engagement process and then give you a summary of some of the major changes that are proposed. Before I dive into all of that, I did just want to introduce you to the topics that are covered by these code amendments. So they apply in the R1 low-density residential zone, and that's typically our single-family zone. And they do three things. The first is they would improve compatibility standards citywide, and this would be for secondary dwelling units, which is a housing type that's currently allowed, also for accessory buildings, which is a type of building that is currently allowed, and then they would also improve compatibility standards for existing alley-access lots. Second, they would allow for the creation of new alley-access lots in limited areas subject to the compatibility standards. And then finally, they would add university area interim protection measures. And essentially what these do would be to limit or prohibit certain types of development in the single-family areas around the university until such time that the city completes area planning and replaces these interim standards with permanent measures that would address the design standards specific to that area. I'm going to go over all of these in a little bit more detail later. I just wanted to give you, you know, introduce you to the topics. In terms of context, this map shows the areas of within our city that are zoned R1, our low-density residential zone. So as you can see, these actually affect quite a few places within the urban growth boundary within the city. And then diving into how these relate to Envision Eugene, they actually directly implement several of the strategies under the Housing Affordability pillar as well as the Neighborhood Livability pillar. They do this specifically by implementing the goals of the Infill Compatibility Standards project. They do this by addressing housing affordability. These are typically smaller family or smaller houses, and that really helps to expand housing choice and variety. And they also finally serve as land use efficiency strategies. And what that means is these are also strategies to help meet a portion of our single-family need with inside our current urban growth boundary. In terms of public engagement, as you can see, the early public engagement for these has really spanned many years in, you know, a number of different projects, and there's been a wide variety of input from really quite a cross-section, starting with the Infill Compatibility Standards. All of these were topics that were brought up through the task team, through their subcommittees. These are things that have been, you know, talked about for many years now. They were also brought up through Envision Eugene during the public engagement there, and they're included in both the draft proposal that was came out in 2011. But more importantly, in the 2012 Envision Eugene recommendation, there's a strategy that specifically calls for promoting secondary dwelling units and allowing for alley-access lots. And the council gave us direction to go forward with those code amendments in 2012 as well. Moving on to some more current public process, this is what we've been up to over the last year in relation to the Single Family Code amendments. As you can see, we've really used a variety of techniques to get input, and we have gotten a lot of input through these. You'll see the testimony, we'll bring forward the testimony that we got during the Planning Commission process. You know, we have well over 100 pieces of written testimony. There's definitely been a lot of interest in these code amendments, and, you know, obviously through the public hearing, we hope to hear more. And now diving into the amendments themselves. So these are examples of what are called secondary dwelling units. And if you're unfamiliar with those, they're really a second home on a single-family lot. They're smaller in nature, hence the term "secondary." They are currently allowed by our code and have been for about the last 30 years. They can either be, you know, standalone structures, we call detached, or they can be attached to the main home. They are, the current code limits them in size to 800 square feet, and it requires that one of the units, either the main home or the secondary home, be occupied by the property owner, so they have to live on-site. You know, we typically see maybe nine to 10 of these a year citywide, new permits for those. We're hoping, you know, that that trend continues over the next 20 years and that additionally that through other incentives, whether it's looking at system development charges or other ways to promote these, that we get another four to five a year during that same timeframe. So we're not talking about a lot of dwellings, but, you know, they definitely have, you know, they're typically in the backyard of somebody's property, so that's why we really are addressing their compatibility. And these right here, these cover really the major components of the proposed code amendment. So first, we're, the proposal is to strengthen the ownership and occupancy provisions. And this is really to address some of the illegal use we've seen where the property owner is actually renting out both homes on the lot, saying they live there but not living on the property. We want to, the provisions strengthen that, require verification, which also helps our enforcement staff be able to, you know, deal with those situations. It gives them more tools and more certainty in dealing with those provisions. The next two bullet points, limiting building height and adding slope setbacks, are really to address looming walls, loss of privacy, solar access. Right now, these structures can be two stories high, and you can imagine if there's a window or a dormer on the second story, you know, that could look over into the neighbor's yard. So these would limit it to one story and help with that. And then finally, limiting the number of bedrooms is also, to two, is also something that's been proposed, and this really addresses the issue of hidden density. We're seeing, you know, these could, at 800 square feet, you're not imagining a lot of bedrooms, but in some parts of town, we're seeing, you know, more than one person in a bedroom, and so this helps to limit occupancy somewhat. We are, so these are some of the highlights, some of the proposed changes, but we're also leaving a number of the existing standards in place, and that includes the standards related to parking, pedestrian access, making sure that there's a principal entrance, and minimum lot size. Those are all remaining. So moving on to the next building type, these are accessory buildings, and these can range anywhere from, you know, a chicken coop to all the way up to, you know, your RV garage. They're not attached to your house, so they're also, once again, standalone structures. They really have limited standards right now. Well, you know, they'd need to be a minimum of five feet setback, and then they have a height requirement, and that's about it. So you might be wondering why we're addressing these, you know, in a package of code amendments called "single-family housing," when clearly they're not a housing type. But what we've seen is two things. One, you know, their placement, their size, their scale can have, you know, quite an impact on an existing neighborhood. And we're also seeing some illegal use of these structures where they're illegally converted into actual dwellings, and, you know, people rent them out unknowingly. So dealing with both of those issues. So in terms of accessory buildings, we're proposing to limit building heights and adding slope setbacks to, you know, really to make them more compatible, limiting the building size on smaller lots, really to address proportionality with the main home, and on bigger lots, requiring an increased setback from the property line, so they need to be farther away from the neighboring property. Also providing clarification that these buildings cannot be dwelling. It should be pretty obvious, but, you know, we wanted to put that in there to discourage this illegal conversion. One of the ways that's being proposed is to actually limit the number of plumbing fixtures, and a plumbing fixture could be a sink, a toilet, or a shower, or a tub. So if, you know, you're allowed to put all of those into your accessory building, you're not, it's kind of slippery slope there for having it becoming a dwelling. So those will also help our enforcement staff as well in dealing with these situations. Moving on to alley-access lots. An alley-access lot is a lot that would have frontage on an alley and, but not on the front street, and it's typically created out of the rear portion of an existing lot. These were allowed in our land use code prior to 2001. At that time, the council recommended they not be included back into the code until they were standards to address compatibility and design, and that's what we're proposing here. They're also currently allowed now in two special area zones, and that's Chambers and Jefferson Westside. Now, this map, that unfortunately is not coming up particularly clear, represents potential location of alley-access lots based on the proposed standards and looking at those lots that have enough development potential on them. So they, a little hard to see here, but, you know, they're obviously in areas where there are existing alleys, so those are the close-in neighborhoods. I believe this shows Jefferson Westside, Friendly, Southeast. Currently, this would show Amazon, South University, and Fairmont. Those are all the areas that have alleys and have lots of a certain size and a certain distance that would potentially make them eligible.
So those are potential, not existent?
Correct. There are a number of existing alley-access lots because we did have these standards in effect. I don't have a map of that, but there's roughly about 90 of those sprinkled throughout town. So this is what an alley-access lot might look like. And as part of this, working with our fire staff, they had some limitations on being able to access these structures. So in allowing these, they're only going to be allowed in limited areas, and it's typically going to be the second lot in due to, well, actually, really due to the length of our fire hoses and being able to provide these with, you know, fire access. So they're about 125 to 150 feet from the intersection of the alley and the street, so that's where they would be allowed. In these standards, there's kind of two parts. There's the lot standards, so those dictate the size of the original lot, you know, how big the alley lot can be or how small it can be, and where it can be located. And then there's the design standards that would apply to these lots and would control the form or the design of the home. And those would also, so those would, the design standards would apply to these newly-created lots, but they would also apply to the lots that are already in existence, that was created prior to the land use code update. These are different from secondary dwelling units in that they allow for the creation of another lot, so that this lot could be purchased and, you know, owner-occupied. Moving on to kind of the summary of what's being proposed, really these were about making sure that the home sizes were at a small scale with a compatible height, but balancing that with making sure that people would actually want to be able to build these and that there was enough flexibility for a variety of home styles or designs, so balancing those two needs. So similar to some of the other provisions you've seen, there's a limit on the home size, they can't exceed 1,000 square feet. Would limit building height and also require the slope setback, which means, you know, at a certain point, the roof would need to follow a certain slope. It would limit dormers and balconies, they could not be facing the neighbor's properties. It would require that windows be set back, second-story windows be set back also for privacy. There would be limitations on bedrooms to only allow three bedrooms, once again to, kind of as a limit on that hidden density or occupancy. Also, there would be limits to total paving area, and there's two goals of this. One is to ensure that there is adequate parking, that they do provide a parking space since they're a little bit off the street, but also to limit the amount of paving so that if somebody can't pave the entire, what would be a front yard for one of these. And then finally, there's limits to the size and heights also of accessory buildings here that would be different previous standards. And that's just to limit the overall building scale and mass on these lots that are, you know, going to be tucked behind other homes. And the last topic are the university area interim protection measures. This map up here shows the three neighborhoods where these would apply, which are Amazon, which shows in green, South University, which is in pink, and then Fairmont, which is in blue. Once again, these would apply only to the R1-zoned portion of these neighborhoods. As you probably recall, through Envision Eugene, the city's committed to doing area planning, starting with two neighborhoods, one, two neighborhood areas, I should say, and one of those is the neighborhood surrounding the University of area. And that's really due to the kinds of development and housing pressures and fast-paced development that these particular neighborhoods have faced due to their proximity to the university and the issues associated with that. However, we're not going to be able to get to that area planning probably, you know, for, until, well, actually, we can't get to it until after the adoption of our urban growth boundary. That's what we've committed to starting it, and it will probably take, you know, a couple of years to actually get that done. But in the meantime, these development pressures are continuing, and so these interim protection measures would kind of put a timeout, so to speak, on some of that development, and they would remain in place until the area planning could be completed and until these, until new design standards specific to those neighborhoods could be in place. You know, obviously, these neighborhoods are a very desirable place for just students, but other, you know, people as well, people who work at the university, people who want to live close-in. And what, the trend we have been seeing is, it sounds necessarily, it's not about the renters, it's really about what's happening to the housing stock more specifically, and it's the types of development and really a lot of high occupancy units in terms of homes that are, have five, six, or seven bedrooms. That would be new homes or existing, you know, a modest, imagine a modest three-bedroom home that could be available for a family, it could be available for students, but if it's purchased and then, you know, create, turned into a five- or six-bedroom home, that home is probably no longer feasible for a family to rent. Probably a family's not interested in buying it any longer. And it kind of, you know, the number of the houses within these neighborhoods are no longer, you know, they're just no longer available for, you know, the mixture of folks that are, that typically live in this neighborhood. They're also seeing, you know, illegal conversions, as I mentioned, on some of the accessory buildings and violations with secondary dwelling units, among other things. So what these protection measures would do is they would prohibit a number of housing types, including secondary dwellings. These are as initially proposed. Limit secondary dwellings, row houses, duplexes, other attached housing types. They would prohibit new rezonings to our rowhouse zone. They would not allow new flag lots or new alley-access lots, but the compatibility standards mentioned previously would apply to the existing alley-access lots. They would also place limits on the number of bedrooms for new homes and for remodels, and that number would be three as proposed. It would place limits on the size and number of accessory buildings. It would also place limits on the location and extent of parking allowed in front yards and limitations on how much a property line adjustment, or how much land you could move through a property line adjustment. Moving on to the Planning Commission's recommendation, they held a hearing earlier last month and over the course of several meetings, talked about these amendments, talked about the testimony they heard, and ultimately voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the package of code amendments, subject to some modifications. Those are provided in your packet at the end. The changes that are related to secondary dwellings, accessory buildings, and alley-access lots, I would characterize those as modest. I mean, there were some changes in numbers and a few other things, and so we, those have been incorporated into the ordinance that you'll be seeing in advance of your public hearing. In regards to the university area protection measures, I will say that probably the majority of the testimony the Planning Commission heard was really centered around that particular topic, and I would, their recommendations are really, you know, in response to that testimony they heard. The Planning Commission really has strong support for adding a sunset date to these interim protection measures to ensure that they don't become permanent, and, but if they give enough time, they recommended 42 months, which is about three and a half years from the date of adoption of the code amendments, and then they, these interim protection measures would magically disappear at the end of that 42 months, and at that time, we would have new standards in place, if not before. Regarding the bedroom count, they were a little uncomfortable with limiting remodels to three dwelling, three bedrooms. They felt comfortable with limiting, like, a new home to two, three bedrooms, but in terms of the remodel, they had some concerns about that, that it might make the neighborhood unattractive for families to stay or unattractive for families to move in if they needed more than three bedrooms. So what they recommend is a little more flexibility for those remodels. So if you had a home that had three bedrooms and you wanted to add a fourth, you could do that if you signed a deed restriction, limiting occupancy of unrelated individuals in that home to three. Our current provision is five unrelated individuals. So that provision's also been added to the ordinance that you'll be seeing. And their final recommendation was regarding secondary dwellings. So as I mentioned, as originally proposed, these protection measures would not allow for secondary dwellings. We heard a lot of testimony about that. The Planning Commission was supportive of allowing them, subject to some different standards, which are more restrictive than our current standards or even the other standards or proposed, but would actually allow secondary dwellings. So they saw that as a positive thing. These will not be in the ordinance quite yet because they take a little bit more code writing, they're a little bit more involved in that, but we will get you the code language prior to the public hearing. So those were the Planning Commission recommendations. And then just in terms of next steps, the public hearing is scheduled for November 18th. On the 27th, there's a follow-up work session, and that'll give you, you know, additional opportunity to ask questions once you've heard all the testimony. And then finally, you're scheduled for action on December 9th. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions.
I've got Mike and then George Poling in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. First, you mentioned that the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend these measures and these code amendments. That seems to indicate that the Planning Commission was unanimously in favor of all of these parts. Would you characterize it that way?
They voted 7-0 to forward the package. I will say there were individual votes on different pieces, and they weren't always unanimous.
Here's why I bring that up. It was, it's my understanding that through a good part of this, the Planning Commission was fairly divided on some of these questions. Could you say that could be true?
I think there were, you know, if you notice that they're about somewhere between 7 and 11, the majority of those, there was much agreement on. There were a couple where it was, there were close votes.
The reason why this is important to me is because throughout this entire process, though these seven years now, I have had very large concern around the issue of us ending up with a product that creates phantom inventory or phantom capacity in some way, stuff that can't get built or stuff that won't get built because of the way it's laid out, or because perhaps our goals for what we were trying to accomplish were too big in what we were trying to do with regard to density. I don't want to see us get into a position where we've put forward this very challenging sort of idea about how we want to grow with regard to density, but then we end up not being able to accomplish it and have wasted the time and effort. So when I see that there's division about certain aspects of it like this, that gives me great pause. And I suppose my next question would be for Glenn. Why wouldn't we need Metro Plan amendments for some of this with regard to secondary dwellings specifically as opposed to just code amendments?
Amendments?
Well, with regard to secondary dwelling, for example, for the secondary dwelling unit pieces, I've gotten a number of emails from folks concerned about this, that we may be overly ambitious with some of this and will be challenged on it at LCDC and in court, and I would hate to see us put forward something very ambitious only to find ourselves in similar positions to where we've been in the past, where we may lose that challenge and not actually be able to accomplish this. So isn't the answer to a very ambitious schedule of something like this to just create Metro Plan amendments and changes in the first place so that we can do the kind of density that we'd like to?
So I think I understand where the, at least the legal argument came from. There is a, certainly a disagreement as to what the Metro Plan currently authorizes in terms of some of the density calculations. The city council has the authority to interpret the Metro Plan where the Metro Plan is not clear. And where the Metro Plan is ambiguous, and you interpret that, your interpretation is entitled to deference by Lupa and by the Court of Appeals.
Have they told, has, LCDC, has someone told us that outright, or is that something we believe to be the case?
What I just said about deference?
Yeah.
State statute says that specifically. Before that state statute, I think it was a Court of Appeals case, said that explicitly too. So the council gets to interpret the Metro Plan because you're the ones who adopted it. You can't interpret the Metro Plan in a way that is flatly inconsistent with the words of the Metro Plan, but where the Metro Plan is ambiguous, and I believe what you're talking about in terms of the density calculations is one of the places where it is, then you get to make that interpretation, and that interpretation would be part of your findings in adopting the code provisions. And so we would argue that that is, that should be entitled to deference. And we can certainly get you more information by memo.
I apologize. So as a part of what we're doing with these code amendments, there'll be a set of findings involved that will back that up and say, gosh, this is what we think this says and what it means and what we're able to do with it?
Correct. In order to adopt a land use regulation, there have to be findings demonstrating consistency with the statewide planning goals, the Metro Plan, and I think always when you have adopted amendments to Chapter 9, we have had findings for you. And so, yes, those would be attached to the ordinance. To answer a slightly earlier question that you asked, can you adopt changes to the Metro Plan? Yes, you can, but recall that at least at the moment, the Metro Plan is a three-jurisdiction plan. You're about to have a conversation in five or 10 or 20 minutes about changes to the Metro Plan, but it's not as easy as, oh, let's just change portions of the Metro Plan in order to avoid a lawsuit. If you change portions of the Metro Plan and somebody doesn't like the changes, doesn't like the increased density that you're trying to put into the Metro Plan, then they can challenge those changes as inconsistent with the statewide planning goals or state law.
Next round?
Second round, please. Thank you, Mayor.
I just had, I don't know if it's easy for you to do now or not, but the particular ones that Mike is referring to that had a split vote, identifying those issues for us would be helpful.
I can bring that. Feature date.
George Poling.
Thank you. On the map that you used for the low-density residential zoning, this may not be directly in reference to this topic, but I know of at least two instances where a map has caused considerable amount of problems because of the inaccuracies or because of the technology used at the time. So is there anything in process now with the planning people to go through and update and correct and, I guess, modernize the maps that we're using, where we're showing things such as the different zoning areas?
Are you referring specifically to the map that shows single-family zoning?
Not specifically, but I know there, like I said, I know of at least two different occasions where a map that was used by the city and by developers were inaccurate for whatever reasons. One was because the pencil was too thick and it accidentally took in some areas. Another one was some discrepancies in the discussion about the color of the map.
Yeah.
So I just want to know if we're doing anything to kind of go back and double-check on that to make corrections?
Yeah, I think you're referring to, in specific, the Metro Plan diagram.
So I just want to know if we're doing anything to kind of go back and double check on that to make corrections.
Yeah, I think you're referring to, in specific, the Metro Plan diagram, which is only legally adopted at 11 by 17 size. And so it makes it very difficult to look at an individual parcel. And so that's where a lot of those challenges have come in. As part of Envision Eugene, we are adopting our own comprehensive plan and our own map. We will be using the latest GIS technology, which will allow us to blow that up. And we're also pursuing a parcel-specific plan designation. So right now, it's referred to kind of as a blob diagram. It's difficult in some certain, in some instances to determine where the boundary is. And so we're actually currently working on understanding exactly where those lot lines intersect with the boundaries. So that is in process.
Okay, all right. And then in reference to the accessory buildings, you mentioned RV sheds. Currently, as you drive around town, you see all kinds of different RV sheds. Some of them are the ripstop materials that are put up on the PVC pipe. Some of them are aluminum-type buildings. Is there a permitting process that you have to go through and is there a requirement for the type of material used on those and is that going to be in these changes?
It is not going to be in these changes. You know, if it's a substantial structure, I know that it does require a permit, but as these changes as proposed aren't dictating what kind of siding to use and what kind of materials to use. I don't know if permits are required for some of the carports that you might be mentioning, some of the temporary structures. I'm not sure how that plays out. I can follow up with that if you would like.
All right. And also, I would like a little bit more explanation, if you can, on why a sunset date was recommended?
Sure. It was really for a couple of reasons. One, I think there was a concern that these would, you know, become permanent if nothing were to happen and if, you know, for some reason, the area planning was delayed, that these would become permanent. And they're not intended to be permanent. They're really intended honestly as a stopgap measure. As we heard during the testimony, I mean, people, you know, they want to be able to build accessory dwellings. They want to be able to build accessory buildings. But these are just kind of in order to, you know, to take a timeout, to collect ourselves and get those new standards into place. The time itself, they had suggested a year or, you know, three years or four years, so they kind of split it down the middle there and went with a three and a half. And that was really to allow there to be enough time for us to complete the area planning and to get the new standards into place.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a good idea to have a sunset date. I'm glad I'm not the one that's trying to figure out what that sunset date's going to be. And then as the mayor brought up, I too would be interested in the, either the minutes or a brief synopsis of the Planning Commission's individual votes on the recommendations. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. So maybe it's still being, feeling like I'm catching up, doing a lot of catch-up here on this process, but I'm very confused why this special consideration for these three neighborhoods and particular outreach to those neighborhood associations when presumably these measures will have impacts on all neighborhoods in the city.
So the university area interim protection measures, those are really, you know, the three neighborhoods that when we think of how, you know, besides West University, which doesn't have any single-family housing, so they're separate from this at this time. But backing up as part of Envision Eugene, as I mentioned, we've committed to doing an area plan around the university area for those neighborhoods due to the impacts of being right next to the university and what that means in terms of, you know, what it does to the housing, what kinds of housing types they're seeing, how that's changing their neighborhood. So we've committed to doing that planning, but as I mentioned, we're not going to be able to get to that right away, not until we've adopted their urban growth boundary for Envision Eugene. And so these are, in a sense, a stopgap measure until we get to that area planning. Maybe you're asking more, you know, why does it feel like we're singling out those particular neighborhoods as opposed to others? And I do really think that they have unique characteristics, given their location and given the pressures that they face in terms of student housing. I don't think that other neighborhoods feel quite those same pressures. In fact, going through the history of the infill compatibility standards, that there's even recommendations specific to those three neighborhoods regarding additions, remodels, and conversions. So this is also something that we've, you know, heard a lot about and actually experienced it a lot, just when, you know, a couple, it was about a year ago, we processed that some code amendments related to multifamily housing and there was a lot of discussion about South University and West University neighborhoods at that time. And that's where they were feeling intense pressures in their multifamily, but that has slowly spread into the single-family neighborhoods as well and has the potential to permanently change the character of those neighborhoods. And it's not just, you know, the big nice houses. It's affecting the modest houses that a family could rent or that a family could own as well. And it's, you know, those are being converted into types of houses that really just aren't feasible for a family or other types of users to rent or own other than students.
So I appreciate that answer. I think, and I recognize that the university has a disproportional impact on the surrounding neighborhood in terms of housing stock. But I worry, you know, in terms of who's empowered to speak up and complain and connect with these processes and who else in our city might not even know that they have the right to complain about a unit that's being built next door to them and not understand that there's a process to engage around that. So it's concerning to me that we seem to make a special effort to engage with people who are already engaging with us and maybe not thinking about other neighborhoods that might be experiencing impacts, maybe not at the rate that the university is, but not recognizing or even understanding that they could step up and be part of this process. So I really want us to be thinking about that as we go forward with this.
And I will say, it's not, you know, apparent in the shortlist of public engagement processes, but we have sent numerous emails and contacted the other neighborhood associations than those listed there. Those are the ones who actually took us up on the offer to meet with them. So we have invited all neighborhood associations to talk about this whole package of code amendments, you know, at varying times. They're all on my interested parties list that they get an email from me occasionally giving them an update. So we've done what we can to engage the neighborhood associations. It is a bit harder to get, you know, to neighbors in general if they're, you know, to engage in these processes.
And I'd just like to add to that. It sometimes gets lost in this process, but the secondary dwelling units are currently allowed in the city. And so, and there are some limited standards that are applied to those, but really what we're proposing as part of these amendments are compatibility standards to make sure that they have, they don't have a negative impact or at least have a neutral impact on those neighborhoods. So we're not necessarily allowing something that wasn't happening before in terms of secondary dwelling units. We're actually putting compatibility standards on. Alley access lots are a different story where we are going to be, or we're proposing to allow those where they're not currently allowed. But again, it's in those kind of limited area of town that we have done outreach to.
Yeah. So, and I appreciate, you know, the outreach to the neighborhood associations. I think if we're really approaching this work through a triple bottom line analysis, then that's a social equity aspect in my mind in that we might need to make an extra effort to get you guys on the agenda of a neighborhood meeting that has not been actively engaged in this process so that they understand what's out there for them in terms of engagement. And then I just had a couple of questions and comments. So I noticed one of the requirements was to require driveways be perpendicular to the street. So that would preclude circular driveways is how I would read that, wondering why we would, if that's the case and why we would do that.
So in most of the areas where this applies, they're really kind of a standard, you know, a traditional block style and the lots are rectangular. They're, you know, 50 to maybe 70 feet wide. I can't even think of one in those three neighborhoods where I've seen a circular drive, other than on the other side of Fairmont, which as you'll notice, the driveway standards wouldn't apply to the hilly lots because of, you know, the topography makes it a little challenging to meet these particular standards. What that is really intended to prevent is some of the parkways, driveways we've seen where they come in off the street and then they park right in front of the house. And we've seen a number of those in the university neighborhood, particularly among rental properties where they've got five bedrooms and five, at least five people, and quite a few of them have cars. So they're trying to find that parking on their lot and they end up paving, you know, a great portion of their front yard.
And then I wasn't sure on the secondary attached, secondary dwelling attached versus detached, were there differences in what was required in terms of owner occupancy?
No, those are identical.
Okay. And then the last comment is just on trying to limit plumbing in those buildings that aren't supposed to, accessory buildings, as a way to get enforcement. I would just want us to be careful about that. I can imagine a number of very legitimate reasons to install a second, you know, a bathroom, a freestanding bathroom in one of those units, you know, for someone who works in particular, you know, industry and wants to have that access outside of their house.
So just to clarify in a little bit of detail, but it would allow two plumbing fixtures. So you could have a toilet and a sink, a shower and a sink, two sinks. But if you wanted to have that third, which is kind of where that slippery slope starts, then the property owner would be required to sign a deed restriction acknowledging that I know the rules, I know I can't convert this into a house, and I know if I do, I'm going to get in big trouble, so.
So they'd still have the option of doing three kind of plumbing?
Right.
As long as they stipulated they weren't getting it?
Right, right. So then it's intentional on their part.
Great, thank you.
Glenn, did you have something?
I just wanted to add a comment on George's question and then statement about a sunset. We actually have a concern about you including in an ordinance on a land use regulation, an automatic sunset. Legally, you certainly can do it, but there are some pragmatic things to think about which we think argue against doing an automatic sunset. And instead of an automatic sunset, if you want to make sure that the manager brings you back, the code amendments that would allow these provisions to go away, that we just include something in the ordinance that says, city manager, you shall return to the council by X date or to the Planning Commission by X date with these code amendments. The concern with the sunset is because of a state law that says when an application, when a land use application is filed, that application is governed by the criteria in effect at the time that the application is filed. With an automatic sunset, you have the potential, and we actually had these problems when LUCA was first adopted and, you know, within the couple of years after that, you have the potential that somebody applies, well, you get the code amendments and let's say the process is working perfectly, you adopt the code amendments before the sunset. You know, let's say it's the day before the sunset. Somebody appeals those code amendments. The code amendments go up to Luba. The land use regulations that you adopt normally will include a provision that say the code amendments don't take effect until Luba has said they pass muster. Otherwise, what happens is Luba remands the code amendments if there's a problem. And during that remand, the code amendments aren't in effect. And so you get this weird scenario where, okay, I apply on day one, I'm subject to these requirements. I apply on day five, well, the sunset's gone, but the new code amendments are in effect. I apply on day 45, Luba's remanded, now what's in effect? Well, the code amendments you just adopted aren't in effect. The ones that have sunsetted aren't in effect. So we go back to something and it's very unclear as to what that something is. So the sunsets just create, we think, more problems. If the concern is to make sure that the manager doesn't forget to do this, we should just include an express statement in the ordinance saying, bring us, or initiate the code amendments by X date.
Got it.
Thanks.
That works.
Okay, Betty and then Chris and Alan and George Brown. Betty?
Thank you. First, I want to say I agree with, I like to know who voted for what. And I've said that every time we've had an advisory committee, even a temporary committee. If there's not full agreement, I'd like to know who voted against the whole thing and their reasons, not just the names, but their reasons. I think that would be helpful. And I, next thing I want to say is I think this letter that we got from a lot of neighborhood leaders is really impressive and I hope that the planning department will look at all of these things carefully before you finish the, before you bring things back to us. They have some really good arguments and it's an impressive list of people. You know the one I'm talking about that we got from?
Yes.
A lot of neighborhood leaders. Questions? Oh, another thing, a comment. I think we, is there any way to accelerate the interim protection measures? I think that's really important, that we do that as soon as possible for the university area. And there's a good reason for that. Anyone who's been around universities in a lot of cities will know that they tend to turn into slums. And we, I don't think we want that to happen to the neighborhoods around our university. They need protection more than other places do. I remember the University of Illinois, some beautiful old houses which were falling apart and had been turned into rental places. I've seen them other places and we've seen some of it here, but I think it's really urgent that we do some interim protection measures as soon as it's legally possible. Then some questions on alley access lots. I noticed, why don't we have the same protections for flag lots?
So those weren't, I will just point out that these code amendments were initiated by the council to implement Envision Eugene. We do have, you know, on our work program to do additional code amendments related to single-family housing, those are, and flag lots in particular, those are going to be coming as a later stage. So these are something we'll be looking at and I think some of the concepts used here, particularly the slope setbacks, are going to be really useful in terms of flag lots.
The windows and the second story, I know I could show you a place that is a second-story house in the midst of one-story houses with balconies, front and back balcony looking directly into people's bedroom window.
Absolutely.
And I think that's really important that we, I don't know why they weren't prevented already, but, and parking in the front yard, you said limit, why would you allow any parking in the front yard?
Well, I guess the front yard would be your entire frontage and typically that's, you know, most homes take access off the street. So it wasn't about not, it's not about the yard part of your front yard.
Oh, you didn't mean parking in the?
Right. It was more if you, if you, that entire frontage is your front yard, then it would be limits on parking there.
I know it happens, the parking in the front yards.
Right.
Accessory buildings, you said there's, this says there's a provision for adjustment in the height. Does that mean anyone who asks for it gets it?
No, it would have to go through a land use application process. And what we've tried to do is come up with actual criteria that they would have to show compliance with, that how, I can't remember exactly what they are off the top of my head, but they're pretty rigorous in terms of, you know, showing that their design is compatible with surrounding properties with that particular property, that they're going to not, you know, have a lot of impacts. So it was just to allow some flexibility.
I was concerned it might be too easy for people to, there, would this apply to apartment buildings too, balconies not?
No, these only apply to, in single-family, so secondary dwellings and alley access.
A question about, and someone just asked me about this, her neighbor's considering a secondary dwelling. And I said, I think that one of, that the owner has to live in one of those, but what if the owner moves away? What happens then?
Well, then they have two options. They can sell the property or they can, I think currently what folks do is rent out the whole property as one unit. So they wouldn't, they can't, you wouldn't be able to lease them separately.
Does anyone check on that? Is there anyone?
You know, currently it is, enforcement is dealt with on a complaint basis. So if it was problems and, you know, the neighbors knew about it or somebody knew about it, then they would call our enforcement staff.
Then what would the enforcement be?
You know, one, they confirm whether or not, what kind of information they have to find that whether or not the owner lives there. They ask for voluntary compliance is the first step. If that doesn't work, I mean, there's different things, but eventually, you know, there's civil penalties that would be issued.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. Actually, Betty asked, one of the questions I was going to ask about enforcement and what do we do, you know, obviously it sounds like it's a complaint-based system. The earlier part that I had around that was, do you have an idea of the scope or the amount of non-compliance there is right now? In other words, how many non-compliant structures? And you may be ballparking and, you know, creating a wild number, but I'm just curious about how widespread the degree of non-compliance is because whether it's compliant or not, it's still affecting neighborhoods.
Right.
And so do you have any idea of how much non-compliance there is?
Not off the top of my head, no. You know, some of them are old, it's been going on a long time, so somebody thinks it's a dwelling forever. There's others where people come in to build a secondary dwelling unit, they find out what those permitting fees are, they change their mind and build an accessory building instead. We have been starting to track those. We have been starting to track those, but we don't have a lot of the information, so basically, it's, you know, on the complaint basis.
Yeah, because what I'm wondering, and I'm hoping doesn't happen, is we create code amendments that, to a greater or lesser degree, if they're considered inconvenient, we just ignore them and build what we want to build anyway. And then with no meaty enforcement in place, you know you're going to get away with it, or it may happen. And so I'm concerned that we could create something that we think is going to protect us, but in the end, may not be as much protection as we thought it was.
Right. I will say that we have worked with our enforcement staff, and there are a number of provisions that are included in these code amendments that actually really help them. For instance, right now with secondary dwelling units, all the code says is that one of the units has to be owner occupied. So you could come to the counter and say, "I'm going to live in one of these units." So until we get a complaint on it, we're assuming you live in it. The code provisions would allow, would require now that you show proof that you own the property, that that's your primary residence, and that it would require a verification as well, you know, within the next couple of years. So that really gives them tools and they can, and authority to ask for that information. So that is one example where I think it'll really help with enforcement.
Yeah, I would very much encourage that, that they provide whatever documentation or proof at the time, so that at least from this point forward, we can try to reduce the amount of noncompliance.
Absolutely.
That's going on, that would be great. And then the other point, we were talking a little bit about why these three neighborhoods, and I recall, I guess maybe three or four years ago, when we were doing the minor code amendments, which is something of a misnomer, because they turned out to not be so minor. And that, at that time, there was an enormous amount of pressure in that area with regard to the expansion of student housing and things that were going on. And so for me, it's equivalent of saying you got five kids and one of them gets real sick. You're going to pay a lot of attention to that kid while they're sick, but that doesn't mean you don't pay attention to your other kids. And so we need to make sure that everybody is getting, you know, their fair attention, and when this kid stops being sick, they, we don't keep paying more attention to them. So that's why I support the notion of, and maybe it doesn't have to be a sunset, I understand Glenn's rationale, but we do have to say, these are temporary, they're in place while this kid is sick, but as soon as this kid starts getting better, we don't want to treat one kid better than any of the other kids. Every kid deserves our full interest. And there may be some of these code amendments that are worthwhile and desirable throughout the whole community. And so we'll want to make sure that as we, as we spread these evenly, those that are context appropriate, we keep those. I appreciate the fact we're trying to get away from the one-size-fits-all notion of zoning, but there are certain things that we learn as we go and would be beneficial to the whole community, we want to make sure that those are also taken into account. So I appreciate the work you're doing, particularly around the enforcement and compliance pieces. I really want to make sure we don't make any mistakes going forward.
So we have, just in the first round, two more people. It's getting to be between 10 and 5 to 1. How much time do you need for the second item?
We could do it in 30 minutes.
So that gives us?
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes to get Ash through these next two people, so, Alan.
No second round?
No second round.
So I'm glad to hear that there was a 7-0 vote to move the package forward. I do like to see the votes, and I guess the minutes would say who voted how, so I suspect that's what you'll probably give us, is the minutes?
Well, we'll transpose those for you.
Okay. When you do that, instead of just saying it was 4 to 3, say, "Who voted how?" And on alley access lots, what are the existing rules about allowing an alley access lot?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The existing rules for allowing an alley access?
So currently, they're not allowed in the R1 zone. They are allowed in two special area zones, which is Chambers Special Area and then Jefferson West Side Special Area Zone, and they each have similar rules, but, yes, a bunch, but similar rules in terms of those, and they are something that we've looked at. You know, prior to 2001, when they were allowed, they were really just about the division of the land. There were no special standards for the home, so they would just meet your typical R1 standards, you know, a five-foot setback, the standard height, standard, you know, lot coverage. But what these are proposing is to really reduce the scale of those homes we're seeing. You know, actually, there's probably a recent example that you might be familiar with in one of the university neighborhoods where it's a 4,500 square foot lot, there's a, you know, a very large home on it, multiple bedrooms, multiple parking spaces, and it really, you know, makes an impact on those surrounding properties.
Right. I was just wondering why secondary dwelling units have a limit of two bedrooms and alley access has a limit of three? What's the difference?
It's really based on the, secondary dwelling units would be limited to, or are already limited to 800 square feet in size, and we're not proposing to change that. Alley access would be allowed to be 1,000 square feet.
And therefore, it could have another bedroom.
Correct.
I'd like to reiterate Claire's point about the education of the code and the process, it's very dense and very difficult. And the people that end up knowing a lot about it are the people that have gone through these battles, and sometimes they're extremely expensive. I know in my personal example, on our street, one of those battles cost the neighborhood over $15,000. And from a triple bottom line and social equity perspective, that's not doable in a lot of places. They can't cough up that kind of money to do that, so they just get rolled over. And so, I'm not suggesting we do that here, but we need to think about ways of educating our neighborhood folks to be able to protect themselves by getting up on these kinds of things and mechanisms to be able to enforce the things that are already there, without having to hire a lawyer and go all the way through Luba. I also really like the idea that, of not having our code necessarily be cookie cutter, because different parts of the city have different pressures and different needs. The university area is different for a lot, because of that pressure for student housing, and it's created a lot of quality of life issues. The number one complaint I've heard for the last four or five years has been about the development pressures in that part of town. And I've lived in that area for 30 years, and last couple of years, the first time I've ever heard, I've heard people complain about it, but I actually know of examples of people where they have moved out of the neighborhoods because of these pressures and the quality of life issues and the decline in the quality of life. So, and if you moved into those neighborhoods, it wouldn't take you very long to figure out that there's a big problem. And the danger is, you know, they see the Western University neighborhood and what's transpired there, 99% renter occupied, almost no single-family homes left, really highly dense, and all the associated problems that are coming with that, and everybody's going, "See, that's what we don't want to have happen." And so we definitely need this time to figure this out, and I'm good with the sunset debt and whatever Glenn said, I think that keeps our feet to the fire and, because deadlines are good, they make us get things done. One question on the occupancy bullet, second to the last on the planning commission.
Quickly, quickly, quickly.
Says it's to be added as a citywide provision.
You're out of time, Alan. Why don't you give it to them in a memo form?
Oh, is that, is that in there, in the code? I couldn't find it.
It doesn't exist.
So that was a city?
That would be added. That was a planning commission recommendation, yes.
Oh, okay, so it's not in there yet?
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Will be. George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't, I'll save my questions for next go-around, and I'll have probably quite a bit more by that time. So I'm going to limit myself to comments and observations right now. As far as the interim protection measures go, we should, we should approve and expedite that and approve it as soon as possible, for exactly the reasons that Councilors Alinka mentioned, so that other university areas don't become like Western University neighborhood. There's no families, there's no children, owner occupancy is less than 1%. They don't want to see that happen to their neighborhoods, and I don't either. Regarding the alley access only lot section of this material, I think that should be pulled from, from the code that moves forward, I think it needs a lot more work. I don't think it's particularly urgent, because it's anticipated in the AS, the first page that, you know, we're talking 40 lots, alley access lots in 20 years, that's two lots a year. It's not like that's tremendously pressing issue, and I think, I think the whole section needs a lot of more work. You know, and I think a very good model, you referenced it a couple of times, is Jefferson West Side Neighborhood Zone, their alley thing, which they basically created with city staff, was, it was, is an outstanding model to use and to work from, because it, those were specifically geared for, to encourage homeownership and protection of the neighbors, protect their livability in the backyards and stuff. So I think that that would be an excellent model to use. That section needs more work. Same thing for SDUs, single dwelling units, and accessory buildings. I won't go too far with that, because I think that the neighborhood leaders' memo to the planning commission was outstanding. I mean, you know, it's 45 respected neighborhood leaders, and they've had boots on the ground for many years, they have drilled down into all of these codes, and so they really know what they're talking about. I respect them and admire them tremendously, and I'm familiar with their work, and I know some of them personally, and I, I think they made some outstanding recommendations. I think my final point is the Adjustment Review Standards, which is Section 9.8030. The approval criteria, I think they're way too vague. Phrases like maintains a compatible relationship to adjacent properties, does not significantly impact privacy, light space, building maintains the scale of the neighborhood, relates to the design, it's way too vague, and it's strictly at the discretion of the planning director.
Thank you, George.
With no review.
So we'll, as George just said, we'll have many more rounds of this before we get to the end of these decisions, and I suggest in the meantime, if you have other questions or comments you want, to just go ahead and send them through, then they can be prepared to respond to them, right? And then, so thank you all for this first sort of introduction, and we're going to move on to the second item on our agenda, the ordinance amending the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan text.
I'll just turn over to Carolyn.
We've got a doubleheader here today.
What series metaphor?
So Alyssa's just going to pull up my PowerPoint here.
Terry, could you move the microphone a little closer, please?
Yes, will do. So this work session is to provide an overview of proposed amendments to the Metro Plan in advance of a scheduled public hearing before the joint elected officials coming up on November 4th. The proposed Metro Plan amendments, in many ways, are the next step of implementing House Bill 3337. You may recall that that bill directs the cities of Eugene and Springfield to establish their own separate urban growth boundaries and their own buildable lands inventory for housing. The Metro Plan currently assumes that Eugene and Springfield share a urban growth boundary and share a buildable land supply. So these amendments are geared at recognizing our new and future reality of more localized planning and decision-making. So we will walk you through the specific proposal. I know that on November 4th, Springfield staff will also be walking you through that, so we can, can probably run through this a little bit quicker today, given our time constraints. But I do also want to give you some grounding in the history and purpose of the Metro Plan and the context around it. These amendments are actually very specific and address decision-making between Eugene and Springfield, but I am going to talk a little bit more broad just for a few minutes, so you have that context. So the current Metro Plan was adopted and acknowledged by the state in the early 1980s. It has undergone two major revisions since that time, which we refer to as periodic review. The Metro Plan is our basic guiding land use policy document for the entire metro region. It provides broad policy direction and a blueprint for how we want to develop our metro area. It covers issues such as land allocation, and that land allocation is represented by the different colors on the map. It also contains policies.
Bigger than my savant.
That is, so let's not use that for any legal interpretation. So it also addresses policies such as natural resource protection, public facilities, transportation, housing, et cetera. On a practical, day-to-day basis, we use it as a broad policy document that helps guide our decision-making around zoning and code requirements. All jurisdictions in Oregon are required to have comprehensive land use plans. The Metro Plan currently serves that function for Eugene and Springfield. However, as a result of HB 3337, and with the future adoption of both Invision Eugene and Springfield 2030, we will be developing our own local comprehensive plans. And so a lot of those regulations will be shifting from the Metro Plan into our specific comprehensive plans. So that does beg the question, what does the future Metro Plan look like? And we are having those conversations at a very preliminary level, but what we do know is that regional planning isn't going away. And we have a long history of regional planning in this area, with our first plan actually back in 1958, that even included Junction City and Coburg at that time. In 1972, we had the 1990 Plan is what it was called, and that was really the precursor to our current Metro Plan. We know in the future, we will still be required to do regional planning, for instance, around our regional transportation system, around public services and facilities, and we also know that it makes good sense, it's mutually beneficial, to do regional planning around things such as economic prosperity, emergency preparedness, those types of issues that don't really stop and start at a jurisdictional boundary. So with that foreshadowing of some of the future things to come, I want to kind of get back to the specific amendment at hand. These proposed amendments will only affect Chapter 4. And Chapter 4 of the Metro Plan basically outlines the process for inter-jurisdictional decision-making. It describes the process for amending the Metro Plan based on the nature and the location of the amendment. So it's important to understand the jurisdictional boundaries, which I'll just refer to this map, a little bit about the kind of lightish yellow area on the screen represents land that is currently inside the city limits of either Eugene or Springfield. The oranger color represents land that is inside the urban growth boundary, but has not yet been annexed into either Eugene or Springfield. And then the green represents land that is inside the Metro Plan boundary, but is outside of the urban growth boundary. Those are three important distinctions. We've made some changes to these jurisdictional boundaries recently, which are important to point out. You'll notice on the right-hand side, or on the Springfield side of I-5, we changed the Metro Plan boundary line, we made it co-terminous with the urban growth boundary, so you don't see the green over there. It's also important to know that Springfield has in fact adopted their own urban growth boundary, so their western border is currently, currently goes down the middle of, the median of I-5 there. Eugene's urban growth boundary still encompasses Springfield. We haven't set ours yet, that is in the process, and we're, we're moving towards that next year. But, but it is important to know that Springfield does have their own separate urban growth boundary. So these Chapter 4 amendments were specifically initiated by Springfield, because they are a little bit ahead of us in the process here, although a joint staff team did develop the text, and we worked with our attorneys on that as well. They are, as I said earlier, they are in recognition of House Bill 3337 and the fact that we will have separate urban growth boundaries, land inventories, comprehensive plans, and the localized decision-making that comes with that. It's important to note that these amendments do not affect our decision-making relationship with Lane County. We still will work with Lane County on those lands that are in between our city limits and the Metro Plan boundary, so that doesn't change. What does change is, is the decision-making relationship between Eugene and Springfield, because we no longer share those lands inventories. So just kind of drilling down a little, to a little more detail here, that there's kind of three categories, I think, that these amendments cover. The first is addressing, again, that amendment type and how we, how we do our joint decision-making, specifically around UGB amendments and metro boundary amendments. We're also looking at a provision that currently exists in Chapter 4 that's called Regional Impact, and actually recommending that that be eliminated. And we also have a proposal in there that amends the conflict resolution process that is currently outlined in Chapter 4. In doing so, we've also done some kind of minor cleanup work to kind of revise some outdated and confusing procedures. to kind of revise some outdated and confusing procedures and we think that the new language is much more clear. And I will turn this over to Alyssa then, who will walk you through a little bit more specifics.
Okay. So there is a handout in front of you and it's highly detailed and I'm honestly going to ask you not to focus on it right now. It's for later. So I'm going to cover the information in here, but at a higher level, but for those of you who want to really drill down, this is perfect for you. What I want to cover using this map up here is what the current decision making authority is and how that is proposed to change or not change as a proposed, as part of the amendments. As Carolyn mentioned, you know, the first major amendment would be kind of aligning, changing the process and the types. I'm not going to get into types because I frankly think it's probably confusing for most people and what I really want to focus on then is just what does that mean in terms of the jurisdictional decision making. I will say that what we, one of the things that is proposed is aligning the types with the decision making authority, so that it will be really simple for somebody looking in the metro plan to determine what type of amendment it is and who the decision making authority or authorities would be for that particular type of amendment. So just using this map up here as your guide, as Carolyn mentioned, the area in yellow, and I'm just going to focus on the Eugene side since that's us, the area in yellow is what's with inside our city limits. Currently, the decision making authority when it comes to metro plan is the city of Eugene. If you think back to the recently adopted metro plan amendment for the E-Web property, that package of amendments included a diagram amendment to the metro plan diagram. That was strictly a city of Eugene decision. As proposed, that would not change. That would continue to be strictly a city of Eugene decision. Kind of the next tier of lands are those actually between the city limits and the urban growth boundary, which are shown in orange and the area in green. So I'm going to show-
Pumpkin.
Pumpkin, sorry, you're right.
For the seasoning.
Yes, so I should have gone custard, custard pumpkin, and I'm not sure what the green's going to, go ducks. So spinach, kale, kale, I think it would probably need to be. So I'm going to talk about the pumpkin and the kale colors next, because those, they currently have the same decision making authority and then as proposed, it would be the same. So currently, in those two areas, Lane County and city of Eugene on our side are required to be the decision makers. That is not proposed to change. Currently, there is that provision, as Carolyn mentioned, called regional impact. And what that allows, would allow is Springfield to weigh in, if they so chose to, based on the regional impact provisions, to weigh in as a decision maker. So let me just explain, let's pick an area in the kale, say the Eugene Airport, because I think we can all probably figure out where that is located up there. So hypothetically, imagine the airport wanted to expand. They decided they wanted to re-designate some of that land so they could do a public use on it. Currently, both city of Eugene and Lane County would need to be decision makers in that, and that would not change. Currently, city of Springfield could elect to weigh in if they thought that such an amendment would have an impact on public facilities and services, so wastewater, transportation, stormwater, or that they thought that it would impact them, you know, have an impact on them in terms of those facilities or services. And then the final thing that you can use to determine regional impact is whether or not it has a significant impact on our buildable lands inventory. So as Carolyn mentioned, we're proposing to remove that regional impact provision, and that's really for a couple of reasons. This isn't the only reason, but kind of important, that that provision has never been used. In all of its time in the metro plan, neither city has elected to use the regional impact provision. Now, that's not a reason enough alone to take it out, obviously. But secondly, we do have shared regional plans for our transportation, and that's actually a state requirement, so that's not going away. We have a shared public facilities plan, we have a shared wastewater system plan. So if there was a change that was big enough to affect those plans, those plans all have their own amendment processes as well, and, you know, the affected parties could weigh in there. And then finally, once we each have our own separate urban growth boundaries, we will actually have individual buildable lands inventories. You know, we've shared those for as long as we've been required to have them. So of course, it made sense at that time, if Springfield was, you know, changing all of their residential lands to commercial, that we would have a problem with that, or we'd maybe want to weigh in. But now, what happens on Springfield's side, they have their own buildable lands inventory, their own accounting system, and the same will be true on the Eugene side. So for those reasons, that regional impact is proposed for elimination. Moving beyond just those jurisdictions, moving to the boundaries, actually. So for the urban growth boundary or the metro plan boundary, right now, the metro plan currently breaks that out into two amendment types. There's either the kind that crosses a ridge or a river, or there's the kind that doesn't. And the proposal is to change that to urban growth, or actually an urban growth boundary or a metro plan boundary that would cross I-5 or all other urban growth boundaries. So, and as proposed, if we were going to move that urban growth boundary across I-5, then that actually is proposed to require approval of all three jurisdictions. But any other urban growth boundary amendment would only require Lane County and the home city. And then the final amendment type I want to talk about is just to the text. So we call those kind of wonky, but you know, non-site, or they're non-site specific text amendments. And that's actually what these are, these Chapter 4 amendments. They're amendments to the findings and the policies in the metro plan. Those currently require all three jurisdictions, and that is not proposed to change. That would remain the jurisdiction of all three. So those are just kind of, you know, quickly, the changes. Really, it's about, as Carolyn said, you know, the ability for Springfield to weigh in on our side and us to weigh in on Springfield's sides in those limited instances. The final change is regarding the conflict resolution provisions. Currently, when the governing bodies don't reach consensus, so if we're, you know, working with Lane County on a plan amendment and we don't come to the same conclusion, one approves, one doesn't, or, you know, we come to different approval, but with different modifications, probably more likely, then that matter gets sent to the Metropolitan Policy Committee. And there's been concerns raised over the years about whether or not that's the appropriate body to be looking at land use, you know, matters. The proposal would send an unresolved decision to the Board of Commissioners and the mayor of whatever city or cities are in dealing with that particular amendment. And I think that's all I'm going to say about that for now.
So my question about the-
I just have two more slides. I don't want to pass over the planning commission recommendations because we had a joint public hearing with Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County Planning Commissions. Nobody attended the hearing or provided testimony, but the three did deliberate and make recommendations. They, all three jurisdictions voted to approve the amendments, but they made some modifications. And so generally, they, I would say, three types of modifications. One were kind of minor text amendments to add additional clarity. We are incorporating all of those into the ordinance that you'll be seeing. Providing notice to other governing bodies, and this was really in response to the regional impact going away. They wanted some kind of communication mechanism to make sure that we're still all, understand what is, what everybody else is proposing. And so we also intend to add that into the ordinance, this kind of notification process. The third recommendation was around timelines. Currently, there is no mandated timelines for metro plan amendments and-
But we're proposing to remove them.
Oh, yeah, thank you. There are, the state does not require us to put timelines on processing amendments, but in the current metro plan, we do have those in there. The staff proposal is to remove those. The planning commission proposal is to add them back in. And so we can discuss that more. Next steps are a joint elected official public hearing on November 4th. We'll also have a work session prior to that, if we don't answer all your questions here today, and then deliberations and possible action on the 18th.
Thank you for that. So if we remove the regional impact piece here, and we do think that some decision they're making over in, somewhere else, Springfield, whatever, that it's going to have a serious impact on us, we get a notification, we tell them what we think, is there any place to go with that?
Well, we are allowed to participate in the process, in the public process, as any other individual or body is. So we are not a recognized decision maker, but we can still provide testimony. We can still appeal a decision if we don't like it, but it does remove that opportunity as a decision maker.
I'll have to think about that. Okay, I've got Mike, and then Chris, and then Betty.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to talk about the potential for, conflict, I guess is the right word, but it's a strong one, between plans as opposed to bodies. I know this is more about what Springfield is doing. But as it stands today, if there were a conflict of whatever nature between our refinement plan and the metro plan, legally speaking, the metro plan always controls and is the governing document. Is that correct?
This is going to bring that to a-.
Yes.
I wasn't supposed to have to do this.
Yeah.
That's not exactly true. So there are situations when the metro plan might not be crystal clear and you would turn to the refinement plan as a refinement of that. So, but the metro plan-
In cases where there's clear conflict, metro plan prevails, right?
That's true.
Okay. So you mentioned that after Eugene, and I know this is about Springfield's part, but after Eugene establishes our own UGB, that we will have our own comp plan at that point. But you did say, did I hear you right, that we will still have a metro plan in place?
We will, we will.
What will be the governing document at that point, when there's a conflict?
It, well, that's a good question, but it does depend on the topic. And so, for instance, when we-
I apologize. Is there, is there an answer in statute about if there is a clear conflict and not an ambiguous one? Which one governs?
Can you help me to answer that?
I think so.
There, there isn't anything in the statutes right now that talks about when you have, I don't know that any jurisdiction's gone through this process where you have a metro plan, comprehensive plan, and then you're changing into city-specific comprehensive plans. So I don't think that there's an answer in the statute for what you're asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Chris.
I want to kind of ask some timing logistics questions. And if you want to put the jurisdictional map back up, I think it's, they have that one. As you can see, Springfield has already gone through the process with Lane County of shrinking the kale area so that they don't have ambiguity of who's governing and making decisions. We still have a lot of kale because we've not yet decided our urban growth boundary. Recognizing that we can't afford to do it expensive and we want to do it right, which means those are the two we've chosen. We can't do it fast. We need to be deliberate. There's going to be an issue here, though, with, the county's going to be coming to us next to say, we want to also shrink the kale area in order to be able to provide more clarity around governance. The council's already flagged at least one or two areas that we're going to want to talk about in the course of doing that. I'm trying to get a sense of what the timeline is going to be for us drawing our urban growth boundary in order to be able to clarify the flagged areas, to be able to have a worthwhile conversation with the county, because those two conversations are now beginning to converge. Specifically, and I'll put those out on the table because they're flags for me, the airport is an obvious one, and I'm sure the county's already aware that the airport is an obvious one, but there's some areas surrounding the airport that also have to be a part of the kale conversation. But the second one for me, then, is the LCC Basin. Because right now, the LCC Basin's a big chunk of kale that we've got to make a decision before we can finalize our urban growth boundary. And I think that's, that's going to force us to have to think a little faster around urban growth boundary if the county's timeline is going to create a nexus there. So I'm wanting to think, what can we do to try to be as deliberate, but still quick as possible, in order to make those two conversations coincide? Because I don't think the county's going to want, want to wait forever to talk about the kale area, but we want to be able to do it in the context of what we know our urban growth boundary's going to be. And so I see those conversations converging maybe a little sooner rather than later. And so we may want to think about how we can make those happen faster so that it doesn't create a conflict. Because I have special interests, I have specific interests in some areas that I think would be very beneficial to be included in the city of Eugene. And I want those areas to, for us to be clear on them before we get embroiled in a conversation with the county about normalizing boundaries.
I think that's, that's correct. And we've certainly communicated to the county that we wouldn't be ready to have that discussion until we are further along with our urban growth boundary process, so we know where that's headed. Great. Betty?
Thank you. I just have a question about the conflict resolution. When you change it from the MPC, did I understand correctly, you said it would be the county and whichever mayors are involved?
Correct.
What's the reason for that? Why is that better?
We thought it provided more flexibility. It wouldn't preclude them from inviting other members of their council or the commissioners or other staff in order to do research, or even to hire a facilitator.
When you said the county, then, did you, excuse me, but when you said the county, then you didn't mean all the county commissioners?
No, it would be the Board of Commissioners.
Chair.
Chair, I'm sorry. You know what, I was saying board when I meant chair. The chair of the board, their title's too long.
Ever is the-
Chair of the Board.
Ever is the chair at that moment.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Why, and why is that better then?
Why is it better than-
Yeah, because it's fewer people? Is that why you think it's-
I think partially, and that they have more of a vested interest in this particular amendment, that would, you know, should be related to land use items. And it allows for some more flexibility to work those issues out.
Will that be a decision that we make, whether we want to change to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, on that point, I guess I don't see how that provides more flexibility. Less people, maybe, so the circle's smaller, so there can be a deal, but NBC, MPC is a little broader body, and probably is vestiges left over from the Eugene Parkway fight. This also makes it very clear to me that we do not do regional planning, that even in transportation, we don't really do regional planning. We have two individual plans and we smoosh them together and call it a regional plan. And taking out the regional impact provision basically eliminates the last venue to cooperate and take into consideration the points of view of other jurisdictions. And so if we do that, we shouldn't really ever talk about regional planning, because we don't do regional planning at all in any kind of fashion. So I'd like to hear some more about the, why it's a good thing to eliminate the regional impact provision.
Well, I'll, I'll try this. Alyssa mentioned that there are three different criteria that are required in order to bring regional impact into play. One of them was that we, because we share a buildable lands inventory, and with that, with, as we develop our own, that criteria is no longer relevant. Let's see, help me with the other two.
The first is that the amendment would require, it would require an amendment to a trans plan or the public facilities plan in order to provide the property with adequate level of urban services. And the second, that it had-
So, so for that one, it's referring to these other planning documents, and is, I think we determined was redundant, because those other, the regional transportation plan and the public service plan have their own amendment process that describes who, who needs to be involved in that. And so it, it just felt unnecessary and redundant regarding that. And then the third criteria?
The third one is that, and it has a demonstrable impact on the public facilities of the non-home city.
Ah, yes. So what was the-
Well, once, it's actually really similar to the first. So the first one is, does it, you know, raise the level of affecting trans plan or the public facility plan for the property in question? The second one is, is it impacting the public facilities and services of that other city that's not involved in the decision? So I'm going to give you, I'm going to throw a crazy hypothetical situation, so this is completely made up. If we were proposing something that required a doubling of the wastewater system, and it was, you know, in an area in Pumpkin, you know, I think maybe Springfield would say that that had a demonstrable impact on their wastewater system. However, we have a shared wastewater system, so in order for us to double that system- However, we have a shared wastewater system, so in order for us to double that system, we would have to amend that plan, which requires Springfield's input. So that's the redundancy there.
Called joint custody.
One of those are fun words, brother.
Divorces are missing.
Alan? So my, my only comment about the, the regional thing is, I, you know, I think we have some things that we're doing more regionally, and some things that we're doing more independently. And so the examples I would give of more regionally are like regional solutions, when we're working on how we can build our economy more together and trying to take advantage of all the things that we all bring to it, or the Lane Area Commission on Transportation, where we're bringing everybody around the table to try to be able to leverage more power behind our asks for, for funding for our area. And that's work in that way, but I think, so I think we're making some very good strides in that way regionally, but I think at the same time, we have a, we do have a pretty strong desire for people to run their own areas and have their independence. So both of those things seem to be happening at the same time. We're having that discussion about what a metro partnership is going to evolve into right now, too. So that, that discussion is happening in many forms, all over the place right now. I just, personally, we're going to have to think more about the removing some of these things that are in here. Thank you very much for your presentation.